Remember, there's a 20-second delay, so we're good to go.
Okay, here we go. We all reconvened from our closed session, and we need to certify that session, so we'll need a motion from someone.
Mayor, I move that we certify our closed session, and that we talked about only what we convened the closed session to talk about.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made in second that we certify our closed session. Any concerns, comments? If not, Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Next on my agenda is a special presentation, June 25th, Picnic in the Park. Mr. Wheeler?
Let Mr. Callis introduce.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
How are you?
Very good, sir, thank you. Staff is grateful for the opportunity to speak briefly tonight about two upcoming special events in the city, both of which are set for the last weekend of June. Pecosa's Picnic in the Park, as you see here, is scheduled for Saturday, June 25th, 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. in Pecosa Municipal Park. The event will feature music from Slap Nation, food vendors, participation from a number of our civic groups, and children's activities. And we'll culminate at 9:45 with a fireworks display. Thanks to generous support from the city, parking for the event is free, and everyone is invited to attend this celebration of the Pecosan community. We're also pleased to note that the initial interest in the event has been very strong. We posted it to our website last Thursday, and we've received nearly 4,000 website views. It's pretty good. So, we anticipate a great crowd. All we need now is wonderful weather, so we'll, uh, we'll hope for that. The second event, in addition to the picnic in the park, is our shop and dine event. We do that typically two to three times a year. We thought it was a good idea to put this together in coordination with our fireworks event. Ostensibly, that will be June 24th through the 26th. The reason we do this particular event is to raise awareness of the great shopping opportunities in Pecosan and raise patronage and awareness for our businesses. One of the things that we'll be doing with our shop and dine is a special promotion while supplies last. As you note, you visit several of our merchants, spend just a total of $50 or more, you can claim this limited edition Pecosan is the Place Beach Bag.
Right.
So, I fully anticipate and am confident that we're going to run out because it's such a great bag. So, please avail yourself of both of those opportunities. We'd love to see everybody in Pecosan all weekend long. And, uh, at this time, I appreciate the opportunity to have shared this with you, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Okay. Anybody have questions today? What a, what a, what an asset you are to this city, Dave, and those who, who help you over there. It's, uh, you know, these, these projects may seem small, but there's a lot of work that goes into these things. And, and, um, so please pass on to those folks that have helped you, council's appreciation for what you do.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your time.
Okay. We need to approve the minutes of the regular session, May the 23rd. Someone prepared with a motion?
Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of our regular session of May 23rd, 2020.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second, we approve the minutes. Any comments, concerns, questions regarding the minutes? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. We'll move on to item eight. It's a public hearing resolution authorizing city manager to enter into a land lease agreement for a cell tower facility adjacent to South Lawson Park with new singular wireless.
Yes, sir. This is the, uh, this is the tower that currently exists at South Lawson Park, all the way in the back on the right-hand side. It's been there, uh, well prior to my arrival. And, um, Tanya has been working on it. Having picked it up, Graham had been working on it. And, um, essentially what this does is to, uh, continue the lease under very similar terms that we've had before. I would note to you, as Tanya can, Tanya's done the vast majority of the work on our side. But the one thing I would note to you is that while we've had a relatively brief period where we didn't have an existing lease, both sides continue to operate as if we did as we worked towards this point. So, they continue to make their lease payments and all of their obligations under the leases. Tanya, what did I miss?
You didn't miss anything, other than the resolutions authorizing the city manager to enter into the lease. This is a public hearing because of the extension of the lease, since it's not a short-term lease. It is a long-term lease, so we need your approval to move forward with it.
All right, okay. Tanya, Miranda, thank you. Okay, it's open to public hearings. See if there's anyone in the audience that would like to, uh, address this issue. I don't think so. We'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of a five-year lease of publicly-owned property located west of South Lawson Park at 1240 Pecosan.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion made in second that we adopt the resolution. Any concerns, comments, any questions? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you. Ms. Kim, we move on to new business. First item, ordinance appropriating funds to support the expansion of the police department's school resource officer program. Before Randy digs into this, because he's, uh, he's done all the, all the background on this. He and I had a conversation about a week ago, maybe a week and a half ago. And, and I had many calls from members of council. As a matter of fact, we had, there, there was no question whatsoever from any member of this council about spending the amount of money that we want to spend to get this resource officer. But Randy has done the work. I just want to thank council for, you know, the, it was just, yeah, we gotta have this. You know, kids are important, and we're gonna do everything we can to make sure our schools are safe. And we're not gonna worry about the dollar mark. Once we get them where we think they ought to be, then, you know, we'll, I, I, I think we're probably the envy of a lot of areas right now. This past Friday, um, I, the, the children come out at the primary school, and they have a big field day there, and they play games, and they do all kinds of things. And when I went by there, I was amazed at the, and Chief Gates, thank you, um, at the police presence. What a safe area those kids were in. I doubt seriously that happens anywhere else. With that said, sir?
That's gonna be a different, difficult one to follow, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item before you this evening really builds on the work that the city did in 2018. We have at least two members of the task force that the council appointed at that time to look into the issue. Councilman Hux, who chaired that issue on behalf of council, and Ms. Allison Fox, who participated at that time, looked at the issue of SROs in Pecosan, and at that time made some recommendations, and we began to implement these programs. And the implementation in those, at that time, in 2018, was to put an SRO position in both the high school and the middle school. What this item does is what you're being asked to consider, is to move forward with position number three, to be locally funded and to put in place prior to the beginning of this upcoming school year. I know the chief already has two additional officers in SRO training or scheduled for this summer, so we'll be ready to go should you approve this. It also then provides the support necessary for the chief and myself to make application on your behalf to the state for their SRO grant program to support the fourth position, with the idea that by the time we get to the following school year, we'll have one position for each school. And in the, uh, in the interim year next year, the, uh, the new one will be shared between the, uh, the primary school and the elementary school. The proposed funding is from the general fund balance. The, uh, the amount requested is $150,000. That is salary, benefits, and related. It's also plea, car outfitting, the police car, and all of the equipment. And, um, just as we've all seen, the cost of used cars, and used cars going up when you can find them, that, uh, police cars are not immune to that. And so, uh, what just a few years ago might have been a total package closer to $130,000 is, is, for various reasons, a little bit more expensive now. Um, just to close out the thought, the traditional time that the state o- opens the window for SRO grants is January, and it, it runs until March. It could be off by a few weeks there, but we're hopeful that with the new money that the General Assembly has added to, to this, uh, grant budget with the upcoming budget, that there might, they might even do it sooner, or perhaps do more than one application cycle in the upcoming fiscal year. We're not sure of that yet, but, uh, this, if you approve it, gives us the authorization on your behalf to request the funding set, set, stand up at the fourth position while we're implementing the third.
Thank you, Randy. Any comments, any questions?
This is a full-up police officer who works for the chief of police, is not a school system security person.
That is correct, sir. This position, like, like the two current SROs that we have, will be police department employees. Uh, they will be city employees, work for the police chief, um, in cooperation with school system. Same model. And the fourth one will be the same, should you approve it.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance appropriating funds to support the expansion of the police department's school resource officer program.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion made in second that we adopt the ordinance. Are there any concerns, comments, any questions? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Um, before we move on, I just want to ask the chief, how's our dog doing? He's doing well? All right. I haven't seen him yet. Maybe, maybe at the next council meeting, you could maybe bring him in. He can walk back in, and everybody can, maybe that's not a good idea. No, I just, you know, just a thought. Okay, let's move on to item two. It's a resolution adopting the 2022 Hampton Road Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Mayor, Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael Bryant, who, in addition to being our deputy fire chief, serves as our emergency services coordinator, will do the presentation. He has, um, has worked with a staff team, as well as a regional team, on the Pecosan aspects of the larger regional hazardous mitigation grant program and plan.
All right.
Michael?
Michael?
As, as Michael comes up, I would note to you that, um, the Pecosan-specific portions of the plan are, are in as attachments. The larger plan is available online, and also there's a hard copy in our library for anyone that would like to see it.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, Chief.
Members of council, Mr. Wheeler. Uh, yeah, the, the 2022 Hazardous Mitigation Plan is a rather lengthy process. Excuse me. A lot of meetings involved, a lot of discussions about the plan. And we met, uh, several times with Lee Chapman, who is the contractor. Uh, she originally helped us with plans in the past, and, uh, myself, um, John Anderson, Thomas Canela, and, uh, Tanya O'Connell was sitting on that committee. We discussed several, um, actions of the plan, plan that we had com- completed, uh, this last five years, and, um, objectives for the next five years. Um, it's a reoccurring plan, so we complete them, we, we do them, we complete them, and then the next five years, we do them and complete them again. Uh, several things that have done in the past is we've received grants to upgrade our, uh, pumping stations. Um, that's part of it. Ken, I'm sorry, Ken Somerset also sat on that committee. Um, so, it, I think we have a pretty good plan. It's very workable, and, um, we do our best to fulfill all the obligations of that plan. A lot of the city staff does that. Uh, and, um, so, we're gonna continue moving on with it for the next five years.
All right, Chief. Any, uh, questions of, uh, I'm calling Chief Bryant. I'm gonna call him Michael, but I won't do that. Um, any questions of, of the chief? Done? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, there is a resolution. We need a motion on.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution adopting the 2022 Hampton Roads Hazard Mitigation Plan Update.
Okay, no.
Second.
Motion made in second that we adopt the resolution. Are there questions, concerns? Hearing none. Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of zero.
All right, thank you, Kim. Third item on the new business, resolution making appointments to the school board. Mr. Green?
Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the school board with the following names inserted. From the Eastern Precinct, Timothy Goodell, and from the Western Precinct, Kathy, Kathy Everett.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion made in second that we adopt the resolution with those names inserted. Any concerns, comments, or questions? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
I'm voting yes, in support of my Western council members' choice of who they wanted. So, aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Kim. New business, our fourth item, res- New business, our fourth item, resolution making appointment to workforce development consortium. Mr. Green, is that yours?
I'm not going to nominate myself, so if someone else has confidence in it on that, I'll do it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a resolution. I'd like to recommend a resolution making an appointment to the Workforce Development Consortium with the following name inserted, Buddy Green, whose term would expire June 30th, 2023.
Second. All right, wow. I guarantee he likes you, man. Okay. We need to adopt the resolution making appointment to the Workforce Development Consortium, Buddy Green inserted. Any questions or comments? If not, Ms. Kim?
We need a second.
What?
No, I heard you. You got it, okay, sorry.
Yeah, Bud.
You want him to take it back?
I'll take it back.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on our agenda is a resolution making an appointment to the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have served as your representative for the entire 13 years I've been here, starting first as the alternate. The gentleman that had been serving was anxious for me to take over, and it doesn't have to be me, it certainly couldn't be any other representative of the government. I currently serve as the chairman of the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission. You still appoint somebody else, at least it will take that responsibility off my shoulders.
You do a good job. Okay, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making an appointment to the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission with the name of Jay Randall Wheeler inserted.
Okay. Second. Motion made in second, we adopt the resolution with Randy Wheeler's name inserted. Any concerns, comments? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel. Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Item six, our last item, is a resolution canceling the second meetings of the months of June, July, and August 2022.
Mayor, as much as I like meeting with y'all twice a month, I'm going to move that we adopt a resolution canceling the second meeting of the months of June, July, and August of 2022.
Second. Okay. All right, we have a motion made in second that we adopt that resolution. Anybody have any questions regarding that? I doubt it. Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Andrews. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just one item, and you've touched on it, just to reiterate the upcoming June 25th event. A lot of people have worked hard to pull that together, certainly not as a replacement of the seafood festival, but just as a sort of reintroduction to community festival in Pecosan. And the one question I did get this past week from a citizen was, is this replacing the seafood festival? Absolutely not, that's going to go on as planned. Other than that, I have nothing else, sir.
All right. Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Mr. Hassel. I'd like to express appreciation to city manager Randy Wheeler and staff for expediting the process for the additional officers. Thank you so much for your executing that.
All right, thank you, Dave. Buddy?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, the Peninsula Food Bank informed Pat and I that they are short drivers to deliver the food for our scheduled food bank day of this month, and suggested that we move it to either the afternoon or another day, which didn't sit well with me, because if they are short drivers, how can they do it that afternoon and another day? So, we're canceling, unfortunately, food distribution for this month. I want to encourage the people that usually come there to go to the Coastal Community Church on June 25th, which is the Sunday before our normal food bank day, or the Pecosan Food Pantry, and they'll be glad to serve them. And anyone that we normally deliver to, if they will either contact me or Dave, Tom and I'll be happy to get what was left over from last month and deliver to them. But unfortunately, the food bank was very uncooperative with us, and we hated to do this, but we felt like that was the best thing, rather than try to reschedule everybody, and sorry for the bad news.
It's bad news, Buddy, but certainly no reflection on you, or Pat, or the, all the people that help you throughout this community, and I'm glad they do have a place to go. That is just an awesome program, and anybody hasn't actually had a chance to work at it or go there and watch out how it's administered, I mean, they knock it out of the park every time. Bud?
Yeah, first off, I'd like to second Dave's comments on the work that Randy and the staff did on the SRO officers. I did vote positive on that. I hated to vote positive on that because I hate the fact that it's necessary, okay? When I grew up, the school parking guard was all that was necessary, and many times they weren't. You had a safety patrol out there doing it, but that's not. So, we're doing what we can to keep Pecosan schools safe and our students safe, and try to keep this community where it has been. Maybe one day, we'll get back to normal living, and people won't have those crazy thoughts, and we won't have to do that. I look forward to that. The other thing is, I want to encourage everyone to apply for various boards and commissions for the city. We have a continuing need to have good candidates. I thank the people who did apply to the school board. We had some good candidates tonight, and I hope the ones who weren't selected, okay, will continue to keep their applications valid, because the day may come when we need someone else, okay? The other thing is, I'd like to thank the people at home and those who came out here tonight for their attention to the city government. I encourage everybody to apply to the various boards and commissions, and there are still eight days for people to apply for positions on the city council, okay? That closes on the 21st of June, okay? So, think about your city government, think about your city, and do your part. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Janet?
I concur with what everybody else says, and just wanted to thank Dave Callis and his staff for giving us a picnic in the park. I know that's an immense amount of work to gather something like this, and I think everybody's ready for it and excited, and fireworks are great, and so I'm glad that we're getting ready to have these events, and thank you for adding this second one for people.
Eric?
Yes, I've been walking around the Eastern Precinct gathering signatures and asked a question about, do you have a comment about city government procedures, policies, anything that you want to tell me? And generally, everybody's just very happy with what Randy and the city does. There were some comments about we're cutting down trees and we'll allow more golf carts, but generally speaking, everybody is very happy with their city government, so I wanted to point that out.
All right, thanks, sir. I don't have anything. Anybody else have anything? If not, we've got a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion made in second, we adjourn. Ms. Kim?
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, with my adjourn.